Okay, I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, March 25th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call it the roll and establish your quorum?
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, March 29th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium and also silence your electronic devices at this time.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Kennedy, will you do us the honor of putting us in the pledge, please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have an announcement to make. In compliance with directives of the County State and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, this meeting will be streamed live and will be closed to the public. Those wishing to view the meeting can do so using the following websites. MetroCable14@metro14live.saccounty.net, also Board of Supervisors at SCCOB.saccounty.net, and click Watch Live. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in the meeting by submitting written comments electronically. Comments submitted in person will be delivered to the Board of Supervisors by staff. Public comments will be accepted until the adjournment of the meeting, distributed to the Board of Supervisors, and included in the record. Those wishing to submit electronic comments can do so using the following web addresses: BoardClerk@saccounty.net, and also online at SCCOB.saccounty.net, and click Make a Comment Electronically. You can also certainly offer your comment in person, although not in chambers. Here at 700 H Street, we have staff that are prepared to accept written comments outside of chambers and have those written comments delivered to the clerk and ultimately to the Chair of the Board. So with that, this is a special meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please call the single item?
Okay, this is to introduce an ordinance relating to temporary moratorium on evictions during emergency. You will wait full reading and continue to April 20th, April 1st, 2020, for adoption.
Very good. I think as I made clear yesterday, this is a subsequent special meeting to introduce this. I want to make it clear, it's a non-urgency ordinance. This is being treated as a normal ordinance, so to speak, that takes the normal processing time for it to be enacted. Again, we're closely with County Council's office to make sure that we had this available for Board consideration in light of actions that we took just yesterday. I don't feel the need necessarily to go over the details, as I think has been made clear in our board materials. The language is, I believe, identical, with the exception of references to emergency in the resolution that was adopted yesterday by the Board. Again, this would be introduced today, second reading, on the 1st of April, and then I believe it's 30 days from that second reading that it becomes enacted and effective, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll certainly open it up for comments and questions here. I did have one, just very minor revision to the ordinance, and that's to keep the title of it consistent with what we have adopted by way of resolution, suggesting the title be the Sacramento County Renter Protection Act of 2020. The word urgency or emergency has not been, or has been deleted, since this is being considered and hopefully enacted in a normal fashion. So with that, I'm not in receipt of any requests, or not request to speak, but certainly I'm not in receipt of any comments from the public here on site. So with that, I entertain questions, comments from the Board. Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions for County Council. When this order is lifted, which date will, I mean, which one will prevail? Will it be the state or the local ordinance?
Right, the way the ordinance reads, it is regarding, related to the state lifting the state of emergency?
All right, and before then, what process would a renter go through if they felt the landlord was evicting them improperly?
Okay, so the way that I view this ordinance, and I think that most other county councils and city attorneys around the state, is that it is a renter's protection versus a penalty against the landlord. So to answer your question, the tenant would use this as an affirmative defense in an unlawful detainer action, meaning if a landlord was trying to evict a tenant, the process is that they have to get a court order, and this would be a defense. So the renter could say, "I have been affected by the COVID-19. I've met the requirements of this ordinance. The landlord therefore should not be allowed to evict me."
So if a tenant is being, has been asked to leave, how can they get a detainer if the courts are closed?
Right, so in this instance, right now, it would not be possible for the landlord to get unlawful detainer order against a tenant, because the courts are closed. The courts in Sacramento County have announced that they will be reopening on, as of right now, as of April 1st. That's what's in place now. But again, prior to the closure order, the day before they actually closed, they did say that they would be processing certain emergency pleadings and that type of thing. I do not believe that unlawful detainers were a part of that order, but we don't know how, when they open up, what they're going to be doing. As we know, they have suspended all criminal and civil jury trials. It's unclear as to what other the state has for the next 60 days. It's unclear whether the Sacramento County Superior Court, what they'll look like when they actually do open back up. So that's a long answer.
So the short answer would be, we don't know.
Right, that's a long answer, too. At this point, a landlord would not be able to get an unlawful detainer action processed against a tenant, but in the future, depending on how long this lasts and how, what the court's response is, this would be able to be used as a defense in that type of action.
So within the court, do they have a department that would handle this type of suit, I guess?
Yeah.
I mean, because I'm thinking they're going to be backed up with heavier duty issues.
Right, in normal times, there are certain courtrooms, I believe it's at the Carroll Miller Justice Center, which is the small claims and traffic court, that those are the departments that do process the unlawful detainer action. So there is specific courtrooms and judges that do process those. In normal times, I can't attest to how it would.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Right, so yes, there are certain courtrooms and courts that do process them.
Okay, thank you for answering those questions.
Sure. Can I just add one more thing? Sorry.
Oh, sure.
So as I said, I think there may be some kind of misconception, or I don't want there to be any misconception, that I don't think the intent of any of these ordinances that are being passed around the state, as far as I can tell, are any sort of enforcement action would be taken against landlords. Like I said, it's more of a renter protection. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. I'll have comments after everybody, when we get to voting.
All right. Supervisor Frost?
Okay, I have just a comment and a question. First, I'll ask the question that, when we received our agenda on this ordinance, it went through County Council in our meeting yesterday. And I guess I'm probably the newest person on the Board, so I'm learning some things about how things work. And I, after we voted yesterday, there was a series of events that took place that kind of led me to believe that maybe that we could improve the processes around how we're bringing items to the agenda. And, you know, the challenge that I ran into was that after the meeting and after we voted yesterday, and we did not approve the emergency ordinance, but we did approve the resolution, there was a media release that went out, and it summarized information about the resolution. It also included information in that media release that I had not been aware of prior to the meeting, before I voted on the resolution. And I, you know, in my communications with everybody concerned, the general feedback that I got was that, well, you know, one side was doing this and the other side was doing that, and we weren't all in the communications. And I've never experienced that before with the county. As a general rule, when we have something that comes onto our agenda, we have a staff report, and in that staff report, they summarize the issue. They go through and talk about the impact on the county financially. They actually have one section of the report that says financial impact, and then after all is said and done, everyone responds and carries on according to however the vote took place. And so I'm bringing this up to ask, I was surprised when we had a media release that had information, when I voted on something, there was information in the media release that I did not have prior to voting, and I don't want that to happen again. I want to make sure that some, I want to make sure there's a way that, I know that it wouldn't have hap, I know that we have an excellent, everybody is excellent, it wouldn't have happened if we were all on the same page. And so I want to know, NAV and Council, I think you're the two that are bringing items to the agenda, how, what can we do to make sure that if one of us, because I guess, I don't know what the rule is, I guess we can bring something to the agenda anytime we want through Council or through staff, but if we're bringing it through Council, it seems like it would be important to have staff involved in putting the report together so that we know how it's impacting the overall county, which is way bigger than the legal side of it, and it seems like it would be helpful. And so I guess I'm bringing this up to, as a part of this agenda item, because it's specific to, the media release that went out was inconsistent, a little bit inconsistent with what I feel I put out to my constituents, and I want to make sure that we're not having that happen again.
So from our side, if a specific item's asked, I do request the Board at the end of the meeting to ask me, what you guys would like to do. You've brought up campaign contribution limits, there's other items that you bring up. I look at the Board, I see if that's what you're interested, then we engage whatever operating department, if you need legal advice, that's what we do. There have been rare instances where a Board member has put something on the agenda, most recently Supervisor Natoli was getting a lot of requests on safely out, and I think at that point, what we had communicated to Supervisor was that we were not in support of that item, but he wished at that point to talk to his colleagues, and there was no staff report. We did on that, Supervisor Natoli brought the item forward, and we went through it. So that's our process normally, what we do. It's been very seldom that we've had County Council bring something forward, because typically it's all either policy or something else, and they will work with us on it. This one seems to be a unique situation that, as you all know how we got here, but that's our process. If it comes in, we bring it into our system, then we come back and present that to you.
I think in this situation, I know it's unique to the coronavirus, but it's, there's an important point to be made here, and that is that when I voted on a resolution, I thought it was a non-enforceable event. I didn't know that, and there was information that came out in the media release that went to the press before I even knew about it, that said we were looking into things, looking into whether or not it was enforceable, given the current circumstances. So in the past, we've all been in on the communications, and I felt like, I didn't feel blindsided, or, in the past, I always felt that the media that went out from the county represented all of us, and I wasn't sure that represented, the way it was portrayed in the article was the way we all perceived it. And so I think it needs, there needs to be, there needs to be a report, it needs to contain all the elements, we all need to be in the communications, there needs to be information relative to the financial impact to the county. Something like this has, could potentially have financial impact to the county, and so I wonder if there's a way that we can do that moving forward.
Can I speak to the issue just of this specific ordinance and the staff report? I think as Supervisor Peters mentioned yesterday, we all acknowledge County Council does not make policy. The reason why the staff report is so short is for that reason exactly. All our office was doing was presenting an ordinance for the Board to consider. Of course, if there were specific questions regarding the enforceability, anyone could have asked, and, you know, I would have responded, and again, I would be happy to do that today if that's something that you would like to hear about. But the reason why the staff report was so short is because, as you did notice, note, this is a very, very rare and hopefully not a routine type of situation that we're in. And as NAV said, County Council normally doesn't bring items forward, and while this had County Council bringing it forward, it was really at the request of the Chair, and all of our, all our office was doing was presenting the ordinance and the resolution for the Board to consider. So I, again, I, yeah, I mean, we.
I'm not, I'm not, my big concern really relating to this is that the media, the release that took place, the whole tone of it was that we passed an ordinance, something that was enforceable. It went through what you do, what you don't do, who you call, and then there was a paragraph in there that said, "We're looking into whether or not this resolution is enforceable," you know, "given what's going on with the state." And so that was not something that we were told before we voted on the resolution. It might have made a difference in how someone voted if they knew it was just something that County wants to encourage versus something that is enforceable based on the state's, the governor's executive order. And so, and I'm not, you know, I, this is not, I'm bringing this up because I don't want this to happen again. I don't want to feel like the media is disconnected from what's going on, and I'm told that the staff, that big part of what happens behind the scenes before we meet is that staff research, you know, they put together that report, and that's part of what they use in their, you know, carrying out the work that has to, that they go forward with. It's part of what they use in the meeting when they're responding to our questions that we're asking them. And so I'm not sure it's even appropriate to ask County Council to do all of that, or if County Council, that, you know, like you've said to me before on other issues, you know, I'm legal, that's what I do. I respond to questions. But there's more to this than just that. It's how does it impact the county? So again, I want to know what we can do moving forward, if there's something we can do to make sure that disconnect doesn't happen again. What can we do?
If a request comes in, all I can respond to is that the way we handle it is that I do ask Board members to ask in public setting, and realize that sometimes time's of essence, but if Board members ask us, and we know that.
How will we know if it's happening? I mean, we get reports from you, but, I mean, we don't, how will we know if something's brewing in the background, or, yeah?
The way we handle that is, I'm just speaking on our side, when you approach me on an issue, I do respectfully ask you to bring it up at the end of the meeting, that this is something that you're interested in, and then you guys get a chance to weigh in on that. I do know that there could be circumstances, that time could be of essence, that we don't get there. Lisa and I can talk a little bit more about if that happens, but we, on our side, we typically look at at least majority of the Board, say, "Go do this for us," rather than just do it. So that's, I don't know, it might be an imperfect answer, but that's how we handle it, so.
So at the time, we need to ask for a formal staff report, that the staff is involved in the report process?
Correct. I mean, when you ask me at the end, I'll use the campaign contribution item that you brought up about two years ago. You asked in this setting, you asked that you wanted to look at it, and the Board had a chance to weigh in on that and say, "Go do it." So we go do our work. Same thing happened with CPAC, a couple of Board members were approached.
Well, that's with you.
Yes.
But how about with County Council?
I was just responding how, from my vantage point, our system is working with you. Lisa and I have not had a chance to discuss this, since this is so far and few that this happens, so.
Well, maybe we can, maybe you can discuss it and come back and.
Sure.
With a protocol or procedure that you, how you guys are going to work together on items that come, so that we have the same type of information and communications that we're used to when it happens on the staff side.
So I just want to make sure a couple of things that.
It's kind of a new situation that we haven't come across, so I get that. I'm not blaming you.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just want to make sure we're all working from the same assumption on it. We will not work on something until we have the Board saying that you will go do this for us. That's how we take the interpretation. This situation is unique, we got to work this through on how it's done, because the way we viewed this was the request came rightfully, and Lisa was asked a question, she presented what was in there, and it came back. We were viewing that as something coming from the Board. As I keep saying, it's so far and few that that's happened, that if.
It was a little different, too, because in one agenda item, there was an emergency ordinance and a resolution, and the media release addressed the resolution, but not the ordinance. So there, you know, it was set up differently than it normally would be in a staff report, I think.
That's true, yeah. I mean, and I'm happy to work with NAV and his staff, and also with the Board, to seek direction, but if our office is asked to draft something for a Board member, that's what we did in this case. Maybe we could have had Chair Serna and, or his office, present the item, that was the intent, but I think because it's, it looked like it was coming from County Council, and the Board letter said County Council, that also threw a wrench into things. But I think that you do raise a lot of valid points, and I'm happy to continue to work on it.
I mean, if I could just jump in on that one, is, hopefully we won't, there are circumstances that come up, but hopefully this is far and few, that's why we're here. If that comes up, is, we're going to be looking at you for guidance, too. If you want to bring something that you are interested in.
If we know it's coming, we can give guidance.
Yeah.
Or thoughts, or whatever.
I don't want to be in a situation saying, "No, you can't put this on the agenda." That's your prerogative. You have to do what you have to do. When you're deliberating, and if there's not a staff report, and realizing that there's some emergency behind it, you could have, an option for you is to present it, say, "This is what we need to do," and say, "Hey, while we're voting on this, we need to know these kind of things." That adds time to it, but you got to have some mechanism when you all are deliberating to give that guidance to me so I can then go do it, rather than Lisa and I going off doing something, and then you all don't know what we're doing.
Yeah, but let me be crystal clear, that what's really bothering me is that something came out in a media release, and it was released to the media before I knew about it. And I don't expect County website media to be a political website, and it should be releasing information that, there shouldn't be, there should be complete clarity there. So there was an issue there that needs to never happen again.
Understood. I think my feedback will be, I'm looking at Lisa, too, if you have a situation that you need something for County Council to do, she needs to have the latitude to fulfill that and give it to you, and then it's up to you all what you want to do with it. If you want to proceed with it, if you want to have us look at it, have us analyze, you should tell us at that point that we're interested in this and do something. But realize there's a timing issue, too, in it.
I get it.
But I just don't want, I want to be very, I don't want to be in a situation that if Lisa approaches me and says, "I was asked to look at this," I will not ever interfere with that, because that's the relationship Lisa has with Board members, just like I have a relationship with you guys. And my relationship with you guys is that I ask you guys to tell me in an open setting what you guys want, and then we go do it.
Well, your relationship with us is that, but if we ask a pertinent question, you give the answer to everyone. And, you know, there's a protocol that you go by, that, you know, on every Board item, it should be that way.
I know, are you done?
No, I just wanted to thank you very much for that. I just wanted to quickly say that I'm really excited that last night around 11:30 PM, it looks like there was some agreement on the $2 trillion coronavirus rescue package. There's some really wonderful aid coming, which is going to help this situation. One of the reasons I did not want to move forward with this ordinance, I wanted to wait, because I knew, I feel in my heart, the best way to tackle this is to have an influx of resources and cash to individuals who are suffering from job loss or business, they're, from people going home. And it's kind of like, one of my friends likened it to squeezing a balloon, the air has to go somewhere, you can't just push the pressure off and have it go away, it's still going to be there. So I'm still not going to support this emergent, this, it's not an emergency ordinance, I just, I'm excited that we have some aid, hopefully in the next, today or tomorrow, they'll be voting on it, and it'll be here, and we'll begin to hopefully give some relief. So I'm excited about that.
Supervisor Frost, if I may just follow up on that, because I did get some information recently from Natasha Drain, the Government Affairs Director, and the Senate, as many of you probably know, has passed the bill.
Oh, no, I've been on the phone all morning.
Yes.
That's awesome.
I thank her for the update, but the Senate has passed it, the House is figuring out how to consider it, because at this time, there's no House members present, they're all sort of self-quarantined.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they're figuring out, I think, right now, how to deal with it, and they suspect that they will be taking it up today as well, if not sometime today, but in the middle of the night.
With a few little fine tunes, they said.
Right, so there are a lot of, there are a lot of funding mechanisms coming to the county for, and other government organizations for rental assistance, mortgage relief, and those types of things. I don't know, I'm just reporting that, I don't have all the details. There also are direct payments to individuals, up to $1,200 and $2,800, I think, or $2,400. That probably won't reach the folks till May, because the IRS has to process it. So there are a lot of things, that's a lot of good news, I think.
Yeah, thank you.
Did that include your remarks?
Yes.
Okay, before we go to Supervisor Natoli and then Supervisor Peters, I just wanted to, if it's not obvious to folks, mention the fact that as Chair, I would have certainly proceeded in a normal fashion, and at the conclusion of a previous Board meeting, during Board comments, asked the CEO and our County Council and all relevant staff in front of this Board, in front of the public, in front of the media, to please work on an urgency ordinance. But I think as the CEO alluded to, because of the unique situation in terms of the timing and the sequential progression of directives and orders and new information about the public, you know, various public health angles relative to COVID-19, and given the scheduling of when meetings happen, I didn't have any other choice, and quite frankly, no other member of this Board had any other choice but to work directly with someone, County Council, CEO's office, to get this scheduled and get it moving. Otherwise, certainly, like I've done before, and I think every member of this Board has done before, would have certainly used the normal procedure and protocol of asking for, or giving direction, I should say, to appropriate. or giving direction, I should say, to appropriate staff, most likely our CEO, which is customary, to bring something back before the board. And that's exactly why I made mention of what I did at the conclusion of just yesterday's regular board meeting to please explore a suite of relief measures that's under the control of the county to come back before this board, because I had the opportunity to do so in public, in a, in a normal, normal public setting. So I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on that. Supervisor Ntolle.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I think Mr. Gill and Ms. Travis have addressed, I think, some of the real salient points here, but I would just want to reiterate that, as we all know, maybe we state the obvious, that any member of this board reserves the right as an elected member of this body, whether you're serving as one of the executive officers of this board, as chair, vice chair, or just as a member in good standing, reserves the right to certainly work with our two direct appointments, certainly the CEO and the county council, to properly agendize a matter before this body. And whether that has an accompanying staff report, an accompanying staff recommendation or not, as long as it's been properly noticed, or do we want to, you know, with matters of a non-urgent nature, make sure that, you know, to, you know, observe, you know, protocol that this board has established over recent years that to, in board member comments and opportunity at the end of the agenda to, for something that we would want to see placed on a future agenda, certainly to note that item. But I think as Mr. Gill said, you know, recently, there was an item that, you know, staff did not support. There wasn't a staff report, a support, a report behind it, but I felt important to have this body discuss from a policy perspective. And, and along with that, I think it's important to note, too, that from time to time, matters maybe of a lesser nature will come to our attention. Some of them may revolve around an item that would actually end up on our agenda or not, but certainly to seek council's advice. And I, I think there's enough understanding by all members of this board, but that there are sometimes matters of a confidential nature, at least in, at least as they presented us and as the attorney that serves this board as a body, but certainly as individual board members, certainly have the ability to seek out council's advice and opinion. And I think we do that, and I think council, certainly Lisa and her predecessors, understand that that information, if it's not of a confidential nature, even if it is, that there's a protocol certainly for sharing that with other board members. But I think, you know, the, you know, the point to be made here is that irrespective of the circumstance it brings us here today, that I think that that reservation of the, the right of an elected board member to place a matter on the agenda, do it properly in a public context relative to policy matter or to some other matter, may not even have policy behind it, is a, is a very, very important aspect of this. It's rarely used, but I think that, you know, again, whether we use the current instance or other instances, I just think that's really important. And I don't know, Lisa, there's anything you want to weigh in, but I know that there is a procedure for noticing other board members on certain things. You shared that as a part of the drafting of the information that had a couple of different revisions to it of a minor nature, but I know those were, that was shared with the board members last week. Once that was put into place, there was no, you know, wasn't, there wasn't an accompanying staff report to Ms. Frost's point, but because, again, it didn't, you know, it didn't go through the CEO. But I do think good communication between the county council and CEO, certainly between board members and, and our chairperson at the time is important. And again, I think it's important to certainly the conduct of our business, but also the decorum here at the dais, but also the relationship that we have as a working relationship. I also want to just comment, too, because again, one who, again, not as an excuse, but probably a little lower tech than all of you, I'm not always looking at the county website, but I certainly am familiar that, you know, in recent years, probably going back to Nav's predecessor, instigated, you know, having a county news site, and we report everything from whether the sun shining outside to what this board may be involved in, to informations of a, you know, of a public assistance nature that offers good, helpful advice. I do think that, you know, however those articles are constituted, again, you know, and I, and I'll speak from my experience, most recently in serving a chair a few years ago, that, you know, from time to time, we're, we're asked to comment on an item, but generally it's just information that the board took in action, and it reflects that, and there's a summary involved. And so if there were some consternation regarding what may have showed up in recent days, then I think that's something that obviously we can all, you know, learn from. And I think Nav, you may want to weigh in on that. But again, we may have established, and we now have a CIO and a, you know, official, our processes evolved over time to the point here, and yet it still engages the chair and individual board members as well. So I don't, you might want to.
No, thanks Supervisor Ntolle. We use that vehicle if there is something of interest that we know that folks have in it. Our PIOs look at it, write up a story, and typically it says that the board met and they passed. I'll use the relaxing the rules around delivery for groceries. It's just a little blurb goes out, it goes out of the media, and then they call us and they get more information from us. That is good memory. Brad did start adding more to it. It wasn't what our intent was. He wanted to get, he wanted to say something about it, and then he started offering whoever was the chair. But until that, it was a very focused just on the media. And even now, if there's something that we think is of interest, because we still have that practice that we got into, we do reach out to whoever the chair is if they want to comment. And, and we do not get into what the chair is saying. Typically, we write something and you all just go, yeah, that sounds good, get it out of here. But in some instances, some of you do look at it differently. We, from our vantage point, whether you comment or you don't, we don't want to get into that. We just want to get the notice out so the media knows, so that they know how to pick up our story. So that's part of our outward communication that we were doing. So that's how that evolved, and a lot of that came out of a retreat we had in December of '07 when we met in your district, and the board at that point wanted us to be more proactive on how we were communicating because we were always getting bombarded inwards. So in that, we came up with this protocol about going through the agendas and picking out what we needed to do. So if somebody wants to make a comment or say something, we're not that, we're not that, what's the word I'm looking for? We're not that strict about it, but if, if the board chair, that's what Brad brought into, should be the chair, wants to make a comment, we're okay with that. The only thing we respectfully ask is that, it's a very limited thing that we're sending out. It's just to get the media to contact us, not to have three, four different comments because we'll never get the information out. So that was how we have lived with that document. So if you all want to make a comment, you feel strong about it, let us know, but otherwise, we're just going to routinely, we send out, this is what the board did, five, six items that go out. So that's how that evolved into the technology that we've been using.
Well, and that helps, and I, and I recognize the sensitivity around certainly this issue is, you know, I've sat here in this very moment, but also the discussion we had yesterday and some of the lead up as well as the follow-on to, to all that and.
And if I could, I'd just add one point. And this might be a point that only on our executive side, we have a little bit of different mindset on it. This didn't come through our normal stuff. I'm not saying that's a problem. I'm just stating that as a fact. As a matter of fact, this is something that Supervisor Serna brought. We felt like since Supervisor Serna was bringing this, it was, even it ended up on the county website, which was appropriate, the board took in action, but if any one of you had brought that item, we would have been looking at that supervisor to take the lead in what needs to go in there because it's an item that he brought forward. And I, I don't want to belabor that point too much, but if, if you guys have something that you're doing, we're not going to get in front of you and say, this is how you got to do it. It's up to you all how to do it. You brought it forward. You have a strategy, whatever you do, and we totally respect that. We do not want to ever be in a position to say, no, you cannot, an item that you brought, now we're going to repackage that for you this way. An item we're bringing, absolutely, we're going to repackage. We're going to put the whole county context behind it. And that's not to say that you guys aren't looking countywide, but you have district-specific stuff. You have different things you've got to do. I want you guys to have that freedom to do it, not be under some kind of rules that we have applied to us. You guys are a little bit different, and that's the fine line that both Kim and I, and I worked with Chris Andis before she got sick, that we always had that fine line not to repackage something that a board member is doing because we can't do that. That's not our, that's not our job to do that.
Yeah. There's some important comments you just made, and I would just say that, you know, I don't want to be in a position in, of second guessing the chair of this board and, or any of my, certainly any of my colleagues. We all, you know, we all come to this with, you know, I think, a dedication to doing the public's work and to do it in a way that, you know, reflects obviously the constituency and, you know, the broader constituency of the county of Sacramento and, and a million and a half people that we represent there, but also the districts, to your point about some of the distinctions there. And I just, I think it's important as we've evolved our media releases and so forth that we have that understanding because I think that, you know, whatever comes out of, you know, what transpired yesterday or any comments here at the dais, you know, I don't want to take it away from, and I was going to say this very frankly, I don't take it away from the work because we have very important work that we do, and we come with certain passions and certain interests, and I think we're trying to reflect.
Yeah. So just one more add-on to that. The other way, our advice when asked is that we have stuff that we do Sacramento County, if you want to put something out under your district, this is what happened, absolutely, that's yours prerogative. The only thing that we monitor closely is our own media page that we do, and that's the advice that if we've had disagreement, sometimes it does happen that whoever we did, took a vote, the chair at that point might go, I didn't really like this way, but it reflects what the body did. And if there's something that that individual member does not agree with or wants to do differently, our advice always is that you can do a separate one under your district. And it's up to that individual to pick up on that or not. But we try to reflect as much as we can what we've done on our media page. I just want to draw that, attention to that part, too, that you do have ability to communicate, and we are not going to be in that, in the middle of that communication. That's between you and your constituents and press if you want to do. That's not our role to get in the middle of that one. And I understand the comment, I know Supervisor Frost is looking at me, that this was a little bit different, but I'm just talking overall. That's how our philosophy is. That's what we try to, we try to stay as neutral as we can. That's our job. There's five of you, sometimes votes three, two, four, one, five oh. We don't get into that saying which way.
Or one, 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 one.
Yeah. So we try not to get into that. So we do not report blow by blow. That mission on that one is just say, the board met, hey, media, here's something that you ought to call us about. Put this information out to be more proactive.
So if I could, I appreciate that, those comments as well, Nav. And I think that, I just wanted to conclude by, at least on this point, just saying that I think that, you know, I, I wouldn't want to see this to, you know, to impede or interfere with the work that, you know, this board has to do on a, on a daily basis and certainly when we're in session, but all the time, because I think it's important that how we reflect the actions of the board, how we reflect our own viewpoints, the viewpoints of the county generally or in a respective action is important. And again, when things are of, you know, kind of a time-sensitive nature, people are, you know, scrambling to, you know, excerpt certain, you know, parts of those actions and so forth. And I, again, this is, you know, I'm not going to, you know, weigh into the, to, you know, to so much of the current circumstances. I just think that more broadly, though, if this is used as example, that this is unique in, in, in many ways, and yet I think, you know, the working relationship up here, our ability to not just get along, but to, you know, wrestle with some really difficult issues. And, you know, if this is indication as it relates to, you know, some of the economic climate, that, you know, our budget, we always, you know, we're going to have some, again, some, some difficult decisions before us, probably this year and the years to come. And I think it's, it's important that our actions, you know, certainly, you know, reflect the, the best of, you know, what it means to, to serve on this body. But I, again, I recognize the sensitivities, and I think that, you know, I don't want to take away from the, the matters before us on the agenda today, but I think it was probably an important conversation to have. So, thank you.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I want to make a couple of comments before we vote and say, I do believe we have a public health crisis, but we also have a public economic crisis, and I think we should take both into account. And I think this ordinance doesn't do that, and if we don't take it into account, it becomes unfair. We have 58 counties and 500 plus or minus cities, and they're all going to have somewhat different ordinances and comments about this. To be equal and fair, I think anything like this should be coming from the state of California so that everyone is dealing with the same law. I also think we should be waiting to hear about the federal stimulus, maybe jumping in too far ahead of that. A few further comments. I won't read that email that I read yesterday from the trucker who was talking about his rental income, but, and, and being unable to make, unable to make his mortgage payments, but I think several of us got an email today that said, from a gentleman who said his wife and he are on a, are a small business owner and they're retired, and they depend on rental income to make their monthly expenses, and they're not protected by Freddie Mac or Fannie Mae, and the federal government is working on a relief plan, so it's only correct to wait. I agree with him. Another comment came from former Democrat Assemblyman Mike Gatto, who said on a tweet yesterday, did you get that, Don? I got a tweet.
Mike, you're, you're in the 21st century and I'm not.
He said, mom and pop landlords owning one to two units outnumber corporations 11 to one, and his sources hide, and many of them are seniors and taking away their rental income. They literally can't eat or pay for meds. So that's, that's where I land on this. Thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Just on that issue right there, I have had conversations with folks from the Sacramento Housing Alliance. They're very interested in working with the county, working at the state and federal level to, between now and when this goes into effect, to identify safeguards that maybe will minimize those types of impacts. So I encourage all of us to do that.
Thank you for highlighting that. So before, first of all, I'll make the motion that, to adopt the ordinance and look for a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Before we vote, though, I do want to make mention for the record that I am in receipt of a total of 18 public comments that were received between, I believe, the end of yesterday's meeting and today? This morning? Okay, very good. And one of those, one of those comments was actually in regards to our anticipated action yesterday, but it's germane and relevant here. I'm not going to read it. I'm going to paraphrase, but it comes from the Vice President of Public Affairs from the California Department Association, Mallory Spelker, who has taken the place of Jim Lofgren, who I think we all know, who has been a rental property advocate for a number of years. But in a phone message that was transcribed by our clerk and subsequently distributed to all board members, she basically said on behalf of her organization, again, the California Department Association, that they are comfortable, they were comfortable actually with the urgency ordinance, and they were comfortable in large part because it maintains continuity and consistency with the actions taken by the largest city here in the county, the city of Sacramento. I also will, and then, by the way, that, that comment was in response to the fact that I had reached out personally and called the CAA so that they had a chance to hear directly from a member of the board that, that was proposing this, so they had an opportunity to speak with me. Unfortunately, and it's to be expected to some degree, we were not able to connect in time. But I also want the board to know that I did the same thing via email and text messaging with basically her counterpart at the Sacramento Association of Realtors who maintain a neutral position on the urgency ordinance. So I just wanted to make mention of those two comments. I want to thank everyone who has taken, regardless of which side of this issue you're on, for taking the time to engage with all of us, to, to take the time to, to write and send to us your, your concerns, your support, your, the reasons for your opposition, your qualified support. As I made mention of yesterday, some have communicated to me that what we're being, what we're considering doesn't go far. what we're considering doesn't go far enough to protect renters. So with that, if there's no further questions, comments by board members, there's a motion and second, please vote.
And the motion carries. Please let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters and Supervisor Frost have voted no.
Okay. Thank you. Are we on to CEO comments?
Yes.
No, no comments. Thank you.
Okay. I want to, again, just take the time, since we're now on to board member comments, to thank you, Nav, not just for your continued partnership with the chair's office, with all our offices, and the dedication of your staff, especially in public health, that are just doing a yeoman's job to, to stay ahead of this situation as best we can. But I also want to thank you for your words today. That really meant a lot to me about your role, emphasizing your role, and kind of the, the guideposts for how we relate to one another as members of this board and as the head executive of Sacramento County.
Thanks, sir.
Supervisor Ntolle.
Yes. Just quickly, Nav, as information continues to roll out, and yesterday the governor issued, I guess, an order, directive that any prisoners that were going to be transferred to state prison via county jails, either sentenced prisoners, that were going to be held in county jails for at least 30 days, I guess. I don't know if that has any economic impact as it relates to, you know, the number of folks. I don't know if the numbers were all that great. We could have some analysis, or at least some information regarding what that means, if anything, to us economically, or even in, you know.
Yeah, we can look into that. It might take us a little bit of time, but we'll get, we'll get there.
Yeah. And then I think to, you know, the point, Lisa, apparently Natasha is already doing analysis around what will likely be in a stimulus bill.
Yeah.
And others have spoken to it at the dais here today. I think it would be important to have some idea what that means to service delivery, to, certainly to the residents and, you know, business owners in the, in the community. But we're all seeing stats as it relates to impacts, to, not only to, you know, service delivery, but to, you know, we talk about economics with the airport, we see about, you know, the entertainment and hotel industry and such, and so I assume there's going to be relief for, for homeowners, for renters, for business owners, for.
Yeah, once that gets finalized, we'll send something out, so, and there's going to be a lot of detail in it, but once it gets there, we'll send something out.
Okay.
To all board members.
And if there's any need to get in line for the money, let's get right at the head of the line, so.
We always get Elbow out, but we'll try.
Okay.
And I was actually need to make a correction because I just emailed Natasha, and she said that it actually has not passed the Senate yet, but they have agreed to everything in the stimulus bill. So wanted to make sure that I was not incorrect.
Well, it's not done until it's done, then, so, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Last, last comment from me. Nav, I would, I know that we kind of have this, this running webpage that is becoming more full by the hour about information for our constituents, the public, about our response to, to the, to the virus. I would like you to work with your appropriate staff, IT staff, and I assume Kim, Nava, to make the action that we, to summarize the action we took today, so that the public has an understanding of what it means as it relates to their circumstance.
Absolutely. We'll do that.
Okay. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned.